Church could come forward, please, and lead us in prayer. Good evening.
Father, we just come before you right now. Your word says in First Timothy 2, it says, "Therefore I exhort," first of all, "that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings, and for all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and reverence, for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God our Savior." So, Father, we come before you right now, Lord. We just humble ourselves in your presence. Holy Spirit, we know that you are here. First and foremost, we just lift up the leaders that are in here, Father, and we thank you, Lord, and we just come in agreement with you, Father. You have placed every single one of them here for this appointed place and this appointed time, Father. You have set them apart. You have ordained them and chosen them to be the leaders for this region, for this city, at this time and place. So, we pray for them, Father. Father, I pray that every agenda will be pushed aside, Father, other than the agenda that would bring peace, prosperity, quietness, and reverence in this area, Lord. We thank you, Father, that tonight decisions will be made, Father, for the benefit of this area, Lord, that we would all work together, Father, in one accord, Father. Father, we lift up this area and we declare blessing and we declare peace and we declare joy over this region. We thank you for every civil servant, every person, every leader, every sheriff, Father, every person that serves, and we just declare a blessing over them and over their families and over their lives right now, Lord. Father, I thank you, Lord. We welcome your presence in this place. Father, pray, I pray that we would meet tonight, Father, with one agenda, and that is to bring more peace, to bring more godliness, to bring more reverence and more quiet solemn living in this area, Father, that you, Father, might be glorified, not only in our lives, in our homes, in our businesses, but in this entire community, Father, that your presence would rule and reign. And, Father, we just give you all praise and all glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pastor, thank you very much. Councilwoman Carr, could you please lead us in flag of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Here.
Councilman Dewitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Ford.
Here.
Well, good evening, everybody. We're gonna start with public comment this evening on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Getting a little bit of kickback on the, or feedback on the sound, I'm sorry. John, good evening.
Afternoon, council, honorable mayor and council members. John Paino, for the record, represents the Benita Springs Downtown Alliance. I'd like to speak on a few agenda items. First off is 6C, in support of the sheriffs. I just wanna say, as the downtown develops, how important their presence is down there, and I suspect it will be even more needed as it becomes more and more developed. Also, on 6K, in support of the Historic Society and this Historic Preservation Board, our history downtown is essential and important, not only to our history itself, but to attract visitors to this area. We do several different history walks downtown, and it's become a destination for many people. Item 7C, code form base, or code form-based code. Today is so important that we develop ways for our downtown and older areas to be developed and be attractive to developers. I am support of this kind of thing. Having said that, and seeing the presentation last night, the workshop, the only thing I'd like to state is, yes, I agree, we need parking garages, but not on the main drag. They should be off the street away so that they don't clog traffic and cause problems when events and things get out. And on item 8A, in support of the Everglades, I can't tell you how important our water is to us down here, how important this ecosystem is. It's our infrastructure for our ecotourism trade, a multi-billion dollar industry in Lee County alone. So, anything we can do, we should do to support clean water. Thank you.
Other members of the public? Good evening.
Good evening. Hello. I was gonna speak on mayor and council member item, so that's Section 8B, adopting a resolution approving a budget transfer from the contingency account to fund a study to identify traffic calming solutions on Pennsylvania Avenue. Hello, I'm Samantha Boldy. I reside on Pennsylvania Avenue in beautiful old Benita. I'm also a member of the Benita Springs Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. I'm here to ask the council to allocate funds on this year's budget to make Pennsylvania Avenue a safer place to live. In recent months, there's been two speeding fatalities on this road, the tragic loss of a 22-year-old motorcyclist involving a school bus dropping off children, and the January 22 accident in which a vehicle crossed the train tracks and entered the turn at such a high speed, the driver hit the fence of the historic house next to Depot Park, flipping his vehicle into the property's tree. Both incidences occurred during heavy pedestrian and traffic times right after work and school. I do believe we need a speed study to, I don't believe we need a speed study to tell us we have a problem on Pennsylvania Avenue. I think you can ask Lee County Sheriff's Office with their regular speed traps. They seem to know that they're constantly writing tickets. The consistent speeding on Pennsylvania has become a serious and dangerous issue for us and all of our neighbors. Seeming lack of regard for human life is concerning. What is currently being done doesn't appear to be working, so it isn't enough. I'm here to ask you to allocate funds to making Pennsylvania one of the centers of our city, a safer place to live, bike, run, and wait for the bus. Any one of the 50 children who wait for the bus on this road each day, our children, are at risk of tragically becoming the next fatality and victim of the careless drivers speeding down this road. Please consider this area in critical need of speed reduction measures, a roundabout, speed plates, stop signs, anything else that might slow down the reckless drivers and hopefully get their attention focused on the people of our neighborhood, our wonderful neighbors walking their dogs, our precious children waiting for the bus, and the rest of us who are out and about in the streets of old Benita. This is a mother's desperate plea to help me keep our children, our neighbors, and ourselves safe. President Hoover said, "Children are our most valuable resource." So, please approve the budget transfer to help ensure their safety and their future.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is William Rowe, and I am here to basically back up Samantha. I've lived on Pennsylvania Avenue for 13 years. I've also come before the council in previous years to ask for something to be done about speeding and traffic on Pennsylvania Avenue, and I understand that long-term solutions take long terms, but in the meantime, people are, you know, being injured, and the problem is immediate and becoming more serious every year, every month. So, I couldn't say it any better than she did, but I am here to basically lend my support as a resident, long-term, of Pennsylvania Avenue and Benita Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath. I, first of all, ditto John Paino. I always do. There's no use me repeating everything he said, but I do want to, myself, tell you how much I support our community placing. I've made that known forever. I mean, I support all of the Lee County and all placing, but we're especially close with our community placing, and we appreciate them so much. Fourth of July. Greg will let you know about the parade, but I just wanna let you know that we have confirmed that Mark V will be our entertainment, and so we're excited about that. And lastly, under the proclamations, I just wanna say, the appreciation for the animal hospital and the Community Cats is wonderful. Support them every and any way that you can because they do a wonderful job. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Councilwoman, good evening.
Others can say it better, but not as long as me. Thank you, mayor, council members. I'm here again on several things as well. One is, of course, the wonderful Community Cats and other things you've heard from people already getting up here to speak. What you're looking at here in this room altogether, we are Team Benita, and Team Benita gets the job done. So, I wanna thank you for your efforts and what the citizens do, particularly Community Cats. We need to tweak that program a little bit, though, to make it more effective. Got some ideas. Next, your form-based code downtown, absolutely no parking lots, no parking garages up front on the roadway. This is not good urban design, and I don't know what's going on with this. Okay, so don't do that. Historic Society, of course, but Pennsylvania Avenue. Okay. Councilman Gibson, not to address you personally, but I'm addressing you personally. We have had a study, and by the way, under council member items, I wish you put the names of who's bringing these forward again so we know who to solicit up front and then hear their ideas and then get to the rest of you. But we did have a ramp study, 'cause when I was sitting in your seat, we did that. That was deemed not effective. But I, too, have seen over the years, you know, on the Oak Creek, even if you put a little squiggle on the road, on the Oak Creek Bridge, people have gone up into the houses there, they've gone over the bridge into the creek at Michigan Street, they've gone around the corner to Royal, into the, you know, trees there. It's very dangerous, in the daytime and at night. And so, one of the things you've had in your budget for two years is the lighting replacement program. I personally am developing cataracts, as people who are getting older do, and I have a real problem with night glare, so I have encouraged you to fund that over the years, but we need to get that done, please. Something I sent to Councilman Gibson, I guess about a year ago. Tampa's got an interesting thing that they're doing about bringing attention to intersections and places that are dangerous in roadways. They actually paint on the roadway sort of a distracting design image to slow people down, say, "This is an intersection," or "This is a squiggle," and it brings attention to the driver, like, "What am I coming up on?" It kinda distracts them in a way that's helpful, slows them down, "Oh, I'm coming up on something." So, that's something that's an inexpensive project that wouldn't require a warrant study, I don't think so. That's where your money's gonna go, is on traffic warrant studies. Yeah, we probably don't need that. Be creative, think out of the box. If you're talking about putting that, you know, Carolina Street Extension, which I'm totally against, and so a bunch of neighbors, right, then you're gonna have more traffic coming through there, and it's gonna be even more dangerous and difficult. We have a straightaway that's really dangerous. So, lighting replacement, you can do that now 'cause you already have it funded, so please get that done. And finally, thank you, Team Benita, for everything you're doing. Get the water right.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Bonnie, good evening.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Whitmore. I just wanna say, I returned recently from a short trip to Western New Jersey, Eastern Pennsylvania, upstate New York, in search of historic districts in towns, and I'm here to say, it can be done. So, I want you, I'm supporting 6K, transfer the money so we can get the study done. I even took pictures, which I'm gonna share with the Preservation Board, and we talked at the last meeting about signage and doing things with things we have now, and that is so close and so inexpensive that it can be done.
Great. Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move along to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
Okay, has been a motion to approve, and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Ford.
Aye.
Okay, proclamations and presentations, we're gonna move on, and if we could have Angela Gibson and her group come forward, please. Welcome, everybody. This is quite a group. How are you?
Yeah, how are you?
Welcome to you.
Hey, she's one of our originals.
Yes, for sure. Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much. And this is, on behalf of the city of Benita Springs, this is a certificate of appreciation presented to the Animal Hospital of Benita and Community Cats of Benita in recognition of the success of the TNR program in helping to reduce the feral cat population by 1,500 in the city of Benita Springs. Thank you. Signed Mayor Peter Simmons, June 5, 2019. And we have, we have a couple of, here, but yes, I'll give that to you if I could. And then here is another, there's two groups, right, two separate. So, there you go. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Who would like to share a few words with what's going on?
I'm Angela from Community Cats of Benita Springs, and Dr. Kitchen and Dr. Lori are with Animal Hospital of Benita. They are the vets who do all the spayneuters for the cats that we trap. We sometime trap too many, and they do their best to accommodate us. And we really try to stress to people that this is a program that's open to everyone in the city, and you don't have to go through us. We're a nonprofit that does other things for the cats, like we provide medical care, money for medical care when needed. But if you need to trap cats in your neighborhood, all you have to do is to call Animal Hospital of Benita, and they can set up an appointment and put you in touch with us, and we'll help you through the process. So, thank you, and we'll see you. If you see us out there with traps, you know what we're doing. That's more than, yeah, 1,500, because if you think of geometrically, one cat has five kittens and that cat, you know, then there's five kittens, two of them have kittens. Okay, we're talking about thousands and thousands and thousands of cats that have not been born into a very tragic life. I happen to have a whole lot of them in my farm, but Alana here is one of the founders in the city of Benita Springs, and I really have to compliment the mayor and council over the years who've been extremely supportive of this. It's a health and safety issue, it's a compassion issue, it's an environmental issue, because, you know, cat poop isn't good for the water, so everybody clean up after your pets. But I have to commend Angela and the doctor for what they've done to educate the public, and the public's the biggest part. They go get the trap, they bring in the cat, and they're doing their part. Is that not right? He pours the wine. Okay? But I give it back to you. I've said enough.
Alana, do you wanna say your words? No. Well, thank you, everybody, and God bless you for all your hard work and your efforts, and thank you very much. Wonderful. Thank you, Samantha. Thank you. If I could please have Captain Blake Lee and his team. Yeah. So, we'll have Blake, you wanna come here?
Oh, no, we'll start.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
beginning of the media information provided by Lee County Operations Center on Monday. We wanted to provide this opportunity for council, as well as the public, to hear from staff on our emergency management plans, as well as hearing from our community partners who are integral to the support of us as we are government-light in this process. Tony is going to go through a brief overview of our emergency management plan system and how we operate. We have been updating our emergency operation plan so that we are consistent and coherent with FEMA protocol, as well as Lee County's protocol, and our partnering agencies, the Fire District, the Sheriff's Office, as we would not necessarily be the incident commander in many of these emergency operations that occur. With us today, we have the pleasure of representatives from BSU, Andy Keeble and Alan Perry are here. With, we have, with advanced disposal, Larry Weinberg and Jim Suter. With the Lee County Sheriff's Office, we have Captain Lee and Lieutenant Boglioli. For the Fire District, we have our Councilman Greg Dewitt, again, for our chief this evening, and with Lee County Emergency Management, Lee Mayfield is here. And with that, just, we are in the process of continuing the update of our plan, and we have talked with Lee Mayfield, with the county, and as a courtesy to us, they're also gonna review our plan for consistency. At that point, we'll be providing a copy to you. It is a management plan that we provide, and we would be providing a copy of that for you as well. In each of the incidences, as mayor and council sees fit to declare an emergency act, you would then implement that plan at the time. And with that, Tony, if you could start.
Good evening, mayor and council. For the record, Tony Backers, manager of Neighborhood Services. What we're gonna do tonight, we're gonna, I'm gonna just present kind of an overview, excuse me, sorry, of the structure and the system that we'll be implementing, and then Laura's gonna speak, Laura Taylor, on some communication issues, and then Matt will come with the public works angle from this. Just some, just some quick numbers from Neighborhood Services, from code cases on proactive stuff prior to going into hurricane season. We've now, since the end of the last hurricane season, we've done 42 code cases opened that's related to stormwater. We've conducted 230 field inspections, and now approximately 200 staff, 200 certificates have been obtained by staff in FEMA. We've also obtained debris sites, FDEP approved, preapproval on debris sites. We're currently finalizing multiple point-of-distribution sites as well, that we'd be preorganized before anything, as well as doing an education on RV and trailer parks for the state and ordinance tie-down regulations. So, the methodology behind this, this is the National Incident Management System, NIMS. This has been in effect for many, many years, but it was Homeland Security Presidential Directive Number 5 in 2003 that kinda mandated that the system that's implemented be pushed through so everybody is actually working the same. Law enforcement, fire departments, National Guard, they're operating on this and have done, but when you're dealing with other, you know, non-governmental organizations and some city municipalities are not working the same, it's so that there's a structure in place that everybody is operating on, everybody's gonna communicate in the same manner, and it's on there, it's actually under the command and coordination, which is Incident Command System, also known as ICS. And it is a standardized management tool that can allow for better coordination and the use of resources, and it represents the best practices, and this has, say, been implemented by FEMA. It also assists with regards to FEMA, you know, post-incident. They can come in, it helps with a variety of different issues. So, you know, declaration of an emergency, this is kind of how it would structure, there would cease to be city departments as they stand, there'd be an incident commander, which is an outcome-focused position, then the command staff, which is the PIO, then liaison officer, safety officer, and then you've got the three, we've put it into three chiefs' sections, operations, planning, and logistics and finance. Usually, logistics and finance would be separated into two, but due to the, you know, the size, we are government-light, and our resources are fairly limited, we've combined those two. Daily operations would be conducted under a thing called an IAP, which is an Incident Action Plan. So, at the outset, you would have the information, the information is collated into an Incident Action Plan, and what it's gonna do is say, what do we need to do, who is responsible for doing that, what resources are required, and how do we communicate? And the information is then obtained through the course of the day, the intelligence is, you know, obtained, and it can then be documented in a situation report or a sit rep, and that at that point can then be transferred to Lee County EOC. So, they're aware of what's going on the ground, and it's a funnel-in, funnel-out information kinda system. With the ICS, we're all operated under, like, a unified command. Everybody's operating under the same OSPSS. So, with resource requests, the supervisors and the team leaders that are in the field are gonna communicate what unmet needs and resource requests are out there, and they'll go to the planning chief, who's the person responsible for the Incident Action Plan, and then subsequently the relaying of the information. So, after internal confirmation that we are, if, you know, we're a small city, again, government-light, if we're unable to fulfill those requests ourselves, then we would make a formal request to the county through Web EOC, which is their system, the system that's in place, that we have the ability to request formal information. It also is wonderful for accountability because everything goes in there and we can show what we're requesting, and then it will be distributed. When you're looking at the, that's actually a FEMA slide on the right-hand side, it kinda shows the funnel-in, funnel-out. On the bottom of the green there would be the Incident Command, the Unified Command, which would be the city of Benita and our partner agencies, who are all kind enough to come here tonight. We provide the information to the EOC, and if there is resources we need, then they're gonna look, are they able to fulfill them? If they're unable to fulfill them, then it funnels out, and then you've got all of the other agencies above it, state, and then even goes up to the federal level. The funnel-in, funnel-out system works even as it would in Benita. We would have the people who are out on the ground bringing in the information to the command staff here, and then we're funneling it to the EOC. So, everything should work under that premise.
And Tony, that is important for reimbursement for FEMA purposes, is this tracking device of how the resources were selected, how they went through the process, and how they were dispersed, and man-hours as well with that services.
And the final part, it is imperative that the county is aware of the circumstances and the availability of resources so they can secure the sufficient resources from wherever at the higher level. And this all depends, the one thing with this system, it's scalable and it's modular. It can expand and it can contract, and it is designed as such. So, if there's an incident that does not require full mobilization, it will work as such. So, that's kind of an overview of the system, and I'll hand over to Laura.
Hi, Laura Taylor, Communications Director. Next, we're gonna talk about the public education and information component. This is based on a FEMA Public Information Guidance Plan. The city operates by offering public education information on potential emergencies all year long. Some examples of that is what we're doing currently with storm surge and evacuation zones, flood zones, and emergency preparedness plans. We're sharing that on all city media. Upon declaration of a state of emergency, the city will implement a crisis communication plan and select a spokesperson. Once there is a state of emergency declared, the city will act as a support agency to the Emergency Operations Center, and we will share any messaging that's created from the Emergency Management Public Information Officer. The city will also share local unified messaging from the city, Lee County Sheriff's Office, Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue, Benita Springs Utilities, and Benita Florida Power and Light. There are a few updates that have happened in the last year that we wanted to make you aware of, and I'm sure that Lee Mayfield, who's here from the Emergency Operations Center, may go a little more in detail. We do have Alert Lee, which is replacing the Code RED system. That's an emergency notification system that allows for users to receive telephone, text, and email alerts. Residents can visit www alertlee.com to register, that's a free service for them. Lee Prepares is replacing the Lee Alert app for iPhones and Androids. That is available on Google Play in the App Store, and it assists individuals and families with preparing for and recovering from all types of disasters. The city continues to upgrade and update our Homeowners Association Community Contact Information. We have 100 information available for about 160 communities, and we are now rolling out a new subscription by district on our new city website, and if Debbie And if, Debbie, will you click the landing page at the very bottom of that? This should further help us to, to, if, if residents want to be notified by district, it will allow them to subscribe themselves. You'll see here, it, it's District One, Two, Three, and has the councilperson listed. They would just subscribe and put their email address in, and then go to the top, Debbie? Click the, click here to find out. So if a resident isn't sure which district they're in, they can just click here to find Agree to the terms, and put their address in, and it will tell them exactly which district they're in. Okay, and Matt, are you ready for the public information?
Can you bring it back to the, uh... Good evening, I'm Matt Feeney, Assistant City Manager, here to talk about some activities that, uh, we've done through the Public Works Department since, over the last couple of years. We have been inspecting and performing maintenance, uh, maintenance reactive and proactive maintenance within our stormwater systems. Uh, it's amounted to, to date, about seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven inlet inspections, a thousand pipe inspections, and a hundred-and-seven pond inspections. The ponds that we're inspecting through Public Works are really more part of the roadway drainage system, so they're, it's kind of a misnomer, they're dry ponds, they, they serve as roadway drainage, but in a extreme event, they also do get rid of stormwater. To date, we've spent about one-point-three million dollars, uh, with maintenance activity. It, it kind of runs the gambit from, uh, pipe replacement. Here's a, an example of, in Sandy Hollow, where we had some corrugated metal pipes that had completely failed, we were able to replace it with a, a new product that, uh, lasts a lot longer and will allow the water to convey out of there. Uh, that was a retrofit or, or true maintenance. We were, uh, able to clean out Lightner and Rosemary Creek, uh, remove vegetation and restore the, the major canal sections back to their original cross-section. And then we also did some, some projects, new, new installs, uh, recently, we did one on Goodwin Street. This has amounted to maintenance and, and restoration of about twenty-seven miles of swales and conveyances, uh, two miles of pipe replaced, and thirty-three inlet boxes installed. So, just some statistics to give you a sense of what's going on out there, uh, from small maintenance inspection to, to larger restoration.
So with that, we'd like to ask our community partners to give you just a very brief, high-level consensus of, of how they've prepared and some improvements they have made over the last couple of years, and how they're ready to prepare for this storm season. So, Captain Lee, oh, Lee Mayfield, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Thank you for having all of us. It's, uh, uh, this time of year for us, you know, we do a lot of hurricane season preparedness, uh, and as always, we appreciate the partnership with the city, with the city manager and her staff to, uh, get us to the finish line here. You know, we do, uh, this is a year-round effort for people in our business, it's not just a, a June thing for us. We spend, uh, a day after day in our, uh, offices or in our Emergency Operations Centers, preparing, uh, developing plans for all sorts of scenarios, and it's a pretty comprehensive effort. Uh, we have a limited staff, you know, we have eleven people in our County Emergency Management Office, uh, but we have four multipliers, like a lot of the people in this room, that support during a large-scale event like a hurricane. Uh, so it's really a, our catchphrase is a whole community effort that starts at the individual and, and family level, and goes all the way up through our, our government agencies at all levels, to include our, our state partners and, and federal partners. Uh, in Lee County, and we appreciate, again, that coordination with Benita, uh, our goal is to build, uh, really a culture of preparedness throughout our community. So it's not, uh, it's not one individual, it's not one family, it's not one government agency, it's the, the whole of us, all of us working together, uh, not just in June, like I said, but throughout the year, to build that capability, uh, and build that culture of preparedness. Uh, you hear all these, uh, seasonal hurricane forecasts every year, uh, the question we get, uh, almost every day in June is, well, what's gonna happen in, in Lee County? Uh, unfortunately, we can't tell you, we don't know what's gonna happen, every hurricane season starts again in June, uh, but what we can tell you is we don't prepare any more or less based on those longer-term predictions. So, uh, I grew up in Miami, uh, in nineteen ninety-two, we had Hurricane Andrew, uh, that was a very quiet year for the most part. Andrew starts with an A, was really the only storm of notice, uh, but everybody remembers nineteen ninety-two in, in Florida. So, uh, all it takes is one, and, uh, all it takes is one impacting Lee County. Uh, as we all know from the last, uh, event we got, it's hard to believe, it's been almost two years since Irma, uh, and you guys, uh, definitely remember that here in Benita, we still have, as, as everyone knows, uh, families recovering from that event in our community. So, don't, don't know what this hurricane season is gonna hold, uh, but because of the, uh, effort that people put in year-round, uh, both in, in the city, in the county, in all our jurisdictions, our partners, Sheriff's Office, Fire District, uh, the private sector, nonprofits, this whole community effort, uh, we'll, we'll be prepared for whatever comes our way, uh, this year. Uh, like Laura mentioned, we have a couple new products, we made some slight edits to our hurricane evacuation zones countywide. Uh, we also rolled out, uh, uh, an application called Alert Lee, which is a, a mass notification app, so not just for hurricanes, but for, uh, even other life safety events, we can notify the public. You can go to alertlee dot com, uh, and sign up, uh, to receive those texts, those phone call notifications, uh, and the, uh, corresponding app to that is called Lee Prepares in the App Store, uh, which is a preparedness app, it's live right now, you can get that on your phone today, uh, and it will walk you through how to develop a family disaster plan, uh, among a lot of other things that we want to promote to the public. So, uh, thank you for what you all do in support of the city staff, we have a great relationship with them, uh, they make numerous treks out to our Emergency Operations Center to help coordinate year-round, uh, and we appreciate that support and the support of all of our, uh, jurisdictions and all of our other, uh, departments and, uh, disciplines who work in the Emergency Operations Center. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, to the Sheriff's Office, I believe.
And Lee, before you take off, I just wanna share a personal story because I remember how much you and I, we got to know each other two years ago, right, or when Irma was here in September, and I just, I remember coming up to the Emergency Operations Center, you had obviously county people there, you had state people there, you had federal people there, you had directors, uh, and you just handled everything amazingly, I'm, I'm thinking, pretty good, right? Next morning, I don't know, six-thirty or seven o'clock, it was real early, and it was another short night of sleep for all of us, and back in those days, I drove a big SUV, and if you, and I mentioned that, obviously, I forget what it was, but driving through, I don't know, three feet of water, pretty easily down on Quinn Street, maybe more, right? And I see this car coming down the road, and then, this is six-thirty in the morning, it was you. You were down there after holding literally a national press conference and everything going on, and I'm passing you in the streets of Benita Springs at six-thirty in the morning checking on water levels. So I just very much appreciate you, I know what you do, I stay out of your way, but I just wanna say thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager and staff, and the community, good evening. Um, a lot has been said here today, and, um, I'm not gonna, just out of respect for everybody's time, uh, not go through, through the same. I do wish to commend the city manager and her staff, uh, they've done a very good job here in preparing, and, uh, they've, they've come and accomplished quite a bit, so I'm excited about that. As you all know, we have a phenomenal relationship, not only with the city, but all our other partners that are out there. I have a very close working relationship with Director Mayfield and his staff. Uh, I've been involved in emergency management since Hurricane Charlie, uh, which was, uh, quite a while ago for, for some of us, and, uh, I can tell you that not only, you know, the Sheriff's Office, but Lee County as a whole, EOC, and all the other partners that are involved have come a very, very long way. We have, in my opinion, a very professional group of, of individuals that are prepared to go ahead and handle and tackle whatever situation were to come along, and, uh, with that, I think you're, you're all in very good hands. Uh, just briefly, just so, so everybody knows, the Lee County Sheriff's Office operates under the National Incident Management System, which is NIMS, which is what you were just all shown here, just briefly. Uh, and NIMS is a comprehensive national approach to incident management by federal, state, and local responders. We don't deal with, uh, the incident management just every so often, every, you know, once in a while when a hurricane comes along, actually, fire, EMS, law enforcement, uh, we deal with the incident management system on a very, very frequent basis. Remember this, the system is set up, it's referred to as an all-hazards, uh, system, which means we address anything, it could be a hazmat situation, it could be a hostage situation, it could be a hurricane. Uh, we, we practice and function in a very similar manner, and, uh, that provides us with, uh, you know, the training, um, and, um, you know, all, all the necessary tools that we need to go ahead and be prepared for that. Uh, regardless of all this, the Lee County Sheriff's Office stands prepared to handle any and all challenges which may impact our community regardless of the nature, be it man-made or a natural disaster. You can rely on Sheriff Marcino and the sixteen-hundred men and women of Lee County Sheriff's Office to be here and prepared to protect and serve the community. Thank you very much, good evening.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, staff, citizens of Benita, go Bullsharks! Uh, my name's Alan Perry, I'm the Safety and Security Coordinator for Benita Springs Utilities. Um, as the Sheriff's Office, we also follow the National Incident Management System, and we take an all-hazard approach to all, um, some even the minor things that go on at the water plants and, and sewage plants, and we've been doing so since two thousand and sixteen. We have an emergency response plan, which we meet monthly and review, go over the plan. Um, we also have an Instant Command Center at our Operations Center out east of I-75. Since Irma, uh, some of the big changes was, I was hired since Irma, um, and they, we have increased the generator quantity by fifteen percent, so, and thank you very much for your time.
Very thorough, Alan, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Jim Suter with Advanced Disposal, uh, just here to let you know that, uh, we've been working with utilities, uh, in preparation for and, uh, planning for recovery from any events that might hit us this year. A couple of key things we learned from the last time, um, and we, we've kind of stepped up our efforts in, uh, identifying locations that we can put containers that, for those incidents where, like Quinn Street, when Quinn Street was underwater, give those people an opportunity to clean their households out and whatnot without having to, uh, have our trucks come by and, and create more confusion. So, uh, we're looking, uh, together with utilities to, uh, identifying good locations for those sort of activities, and the second thing that we've really done is, uh, we've planned to secure more manpower and more equipment, not only within our own company, because we learned a little bit of a lesson, uh, when, uh, Irma took out a bunch of our assets all, all over the state, we had to reach out a little bit further, so we've actually entered into a few subcontract agreements where we've procured some, uh, availability of some equipment and some disposal capacity, even outside perhaps, uh, Lee County.
Wonderful, thank you very much, and thanks for that dumpster on Imperial, that was pivotal at the time, but, oh, boy, thank you.
Good evening, uh, Assistant Chief DeWitt here, uh, for the Fire Department, not City Council. Uh, like Captain Lee said, and, um, for respect of everybody's time, I'll be brief. Basically, the Fire Department, for those of you that were there in Irma, Fire Department, uh, Station Four is the South Geo Command. There's twenty-two fire districts in, in Lee County, and what the Emergency Operations Centers did is they've broken it down into each little geographical area. So, at that fire station, we are the Geographical Command Center, so everything that the county goes through, it comes through the Fire Department. At Irma, the Sheriff's Office there, we housed twenty-two sheriffs there that night, BSU's personnel were there, we were there, city staff was there. So the Fire Department remains there to help out on any type of emergency we have. Every year, we update our plan, every year, we go out to every target hazard in Lee County, or in Benita Springs, update all their contact information, so if we need to get hold of a Home Depot in the middle of the night, we need to see what's going on at Joanne's house, those type of target hazards, we know exactly who to call and when to get there. Um, we are right now looking into, um, some lessons learned that I learned up in, um, the Panhandle about getting with larger areas like the Home Depot, so if we do have to have resources come down from the federal agencies, like for pods or for, uh, urban search and rescue, we've got places for them to stay and put them out at Tentsy, because we ran into an issue in the Panhandle with, we were getting kicked out of places, so. So we're looking into that now to have like little, uh, agreements set up that if something happens, we got a third of the parking lot for something. So that's what we're ready to do, if you guys have any questions whatsoever, I'll be happy to answer, and now we're offline.
Great, thank you, Greg.
So one of the additional items we'll be bringing to you in the future is Carly's actually working with some of our larger shopping plazas and strategically placing these locations in different loca, in different areas of the city, so that we can have agreements in place with those property owners now, that should we need to have an Instant Command Center there. And additionally, Matt's working through the process of finding the location, I think we've secured three locations for the debris removal that meet the requirements of, of FEMA as well. Um, but also, which wanted to really take the opportunity at staff level for myself and Matt and our staff, how greatly we appreciate these community partners and them giving their time this evening, but all year long, the support that they provide us throughout this process. As Lee Mayfield said, this is not a, a one, three, you know, a seasonal event for us, we prepare all year long, and the guidance and the strength that they give us behind this process is, is integral to our, um, being able to provide the services we need to do, so I really wanna appreciate them and thank them for coming this evening. And if there's any specific questions, please let us know, we're gonna have continued updates on this, we'll be providing you the plan, we'll also be providing you the agreements in the future, and additionally, if there's a need for more information on after-action plans as well, we'll have more information on that to continue.
Thank you. Council, questions, comments? Peter?
Uh, one thing I have, not for tonight, but at some time, maybe the future staff, um, which is, um, we still know we have areas that are susceptible, you know, Matt's done good work, but the capital projects are, you know, in the planning stage at best, and I'm wondering, for example, take an area like what we call South Dean, which is that area, Orange Bloss and Pendleton there, um, what are our plans, uh, if we have, again, the Imperial River coming across and lapping across Dean and filling up that neighborhood like a basin? Um, and what I'm getting at is, whether it's sandbags or whatever, I think it would be helpful to have plans in advance with respect to that for short-term fixes, uh, since the long-term fixes are not in place yet, and I'm just using that as an example, but not for tonight, for at some point in the future.
Fred?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing, but not tonight. What can be done where you have communities that are inundated with water, where the people are housebound, and I know in the last, at Irma, one of the problems that they had was that waste management would not go into those areas with the water, and therefore there was garbage floating around in the street, it was a big mess in some of these communities. So that, I, I'd like to hear about that, and the other thing, and that is that first three to four days, we have no power, probably, we have nothing, what, what have we done to really increase the ability of getting the word out to the people and the people getting word back to us? And I know, I, I think the chief told me that at least they're looking at possibly calling up CERT, but besides that, any, I'm just interested in hearing, what, what have we learned from Irma that we're gonna do differently the next time? Which was a big, that was a hard way to learn what you need and what you don't need, you know? And I don't wanna hear it tonight, but I think we oughta have that sooner rather than later.
Wonderful, Council, yeah, Greg?
No, nothing, I was responding.
Amy, you're good?
I just wanna compliment people, uh, because, uh, I had requested that we get an update on what has been done since Irma, and I think that each of the, uh, departments and the, and the organizations did a good job of telling us some things that have been improved, and that is very comforting to me. And of course, you know, you, we don't know how much those improvements are going to be effective until we have another disaster, which I would rather not have the disaster. But I think these questions like Fred and, and Peter brought up should continue to, uh, provide a direction and how we, we should be sure that we're, we're going down the right direction. And did I hear that we, we have the debris sites identified, or we're doing that? I thought that was a...
We have three sites.
We do, all right, I think that's, that's wonderful. And I, and the fact that we've done some of this, uh, conveyance and, uh, cleaning is, is, and, and then the Lee County has done some stuff too, so it's, we didn't mention that, so there's, there has been some, a lot of work that's been done, so hopefully it'll be enough to tide us over in a normal, uh, period, and we will... period, and we won't get hit with a, a, a direct hit again, but thanks for all the effort that's been done, I think I've seen, I appreciate all the work's been done by everybody.
Council, anybody else? Thank you, everybody, thank you very much, appreciate it, thanks a lot. Okay, we're going to move on to Item C, which is a presentation by DPZ, Design on Form-Based Code and Downtown City-Owned Properties, and this is Green Sheet 1906-165. Arlene?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, we are continuing the process of implementing the Form-Based Code for our downtown. As you recall, in February, Council had asked us to accelerate the process, we are still on target for bringing final product at the end of September to you. Additionally, we do have an update on the RFP process of looking at specific plans for the city-owned property at Bamboo and Imperial, Imperial River. We did have a workshop yesterday evening that was attended, and a brief overview was provided, some council members have had individual meetings today as well, so at this point, Galena will be providing a very high-level overview of the draft, and we want to reiterate, this, this is a draft of the potential form, there still needs to be reviewed by staff, we received this yesterday, so we want to make sure it's complementing the comprehensive plan as well. At that point, there will be decision-making points through the draft, and staff will be coming forward to get more feedback from Council on those as we move through the process to the final product.
Good evening, so, this is not only a draft, but it is a first draft. We, we just started the review process, and as Arlene said, we are aiming for more finalized draft in about ninety days, after we have feedback from staff and you all, and so I will be very, very brief, and this is the, the, the whole document is about sixty pages, and perhaps a little bit more, this is the table of contents, of course, with every document of this importance, we start with a big general goals, and I just want to remind everybody that we are doing this in order to encourage the, basically, development and growth within the boundaries of downtown, to encourage private investment, which to match the already made public investment in infrastructure, which you have there, and also to provide housing opportunities, and also gathering and socializing places for the young generation, as well as for the whole city of Bonita Springs, but these are kind of the big goals, you know, development, growth, and attraction of the next generation, which will, you know, continue the development of your city. So, these are the big ones, but of course, there are many more listed here, I'm not going to go in the detail. There are about fourteen major points, you know, going through the different districts, the uses, the density, the urban design standards and guidelines, which are very important. These are the elements of the placemaking or the forum-making of this code, and they are about aesthetics, they're about how the private realm shapes the public realm, about the common ground, you know, which is basically belongs to everybody, which are your streets, your squares, your parks, they're shaped by the private buildings, so we regulate this first layer of buildings and how they work together. We talk about architectural character, we talk about signage, we talk about landscape standards and guidelines, thoroughfare standards, some development, plan developments and assemblages, and also procedures, and finally, definitions. So, this is more or less the table of contents, which was approved last time we were here, and now we basically, we have filled in the contents. The next, the next important drawing is the regulating plan, which shows the boundaries of the Form-Based Code. The drawing to the left is the current Town Center Concept Plan, which you have in the, your comp plan showing the boundaries. We are proposing a slight expansion of these boundaries, which makes sense from many points of view, starting actually with expansion to the west, which will include the ballfields, the middle school, playgrounds, and the library, the former library, which makes sense to be within the downtown, you know, these are amenities which belong to everybody, and it's, it's good to have them as included in your downtown. We have expanded also a little bit to the north, all the way to the FPL, the FPL site. We believe that this will create a better, a better gateway from the north, and some other expansions, which we have shown other times, which basically make a more symmetrical, more symmetrical future development on both sides of streets. This is both on, a little bit to the west and to the south. These are all proposals and in a draft form still. The drawing, the regulating plan, which you see to the right, shows different colors, these are the transect zones, and we have talked before about the transect, and it includes a range of urban environments from the most intense to the least intense. The most intense ones are the darker blue colors, the T-five core and T-five edge, they shape the, basically, the Old Forty-One Road, and these buildings consist of, this development will consist of buildings of mixed-use character, retail or commercial on the ground floors or upper floors, and of course, residential. The darker color is the more open, the darker color actually requires specifically storefronts on the ground floor, while the lighter one, the T-five, doesn't require commercial on the ground floor. Then we go to T-four, which shows a full variety of different building types, small apartment buildings, attached townhouses, row houses, single-family housing, and then the mostly residential, single-family zones, which are the T-three, open and restricted. The restricted ones are the, is the neighborhood west of the railroad, where it's predominantly single-family housing. We may, we actually suggest that accessory units are allowed there, and in the T-three open, it is a single-family housing as well, but with the potential of allowing duplexes and accessory units as well. This is more or less the, I mean, these are the T-zones, the specific zones, but we also have several special districts, starting on the nor-, on the south corner, with the downtown innovation district, the former industrial area, where we suggest that this is the best place for incubation of small businesses, that mixed-use will help a kind of further, more organic development there, activation of some of the underutilized parking lots can be considered as well. Another very special and very important special district is the Bamboo property, we are renaming it into Imperial River District, because the river and its frontages is the most important amenity, and it will remain as a public amenity. I will show you right after this, several proposals for this particular area, and illustrate it with the principles of the Form-Based Code, how this can, we were tasked with this, with this assignment, parallel with drafting the, the, the Form-Based Code. We also have civic areas, civic institutional and civic open space. The civic institutional is in the red color, which includes the civic, you know, the, the schools, the library, while the green ones include the parks, the ballfields, and the other green areas, including the open space along Imperial River. Here, these are the three different options, which we designed for the Bamboo property or the, so, the currently called Imperial River District, these are three variations on both sides of the, of the river. We have a, a public access to the river, to the north is a larger one, this is redesigned to take, to take, to, in consideration, the flood plain area, which gives the opportunity for a large public park on the north side of the river. On the south side, there is a public promenade with the smaller, smaller buildings, which are right here, along the edge, they can be open structures for cafes, for sitting area, for shaded area on the river, and then mixed-use development surrounding, surrounding two parking garages. This is the most intense, intense case, you can see here some proposals for, for these streetscapes along Old Forty-One, then another one, which is of less intensity, with surface parking lot to the north, still the parking garage to the south, similar handling of the public realm along the river, and the least intense is the third one, where there is a residential development in the north, live-work units, a little cluster of a, a kind of art-oriented village with galleries on the ground floor, small shops, and living above, similar situation around the, these are more intense mixed-use buildings, up to four stories tall around the garage. We keep on mentioning parking garage, and it may seem too ambitious at this point for the downtown, but we believe that this parking garage will serve multiple purposes, not only will allow a wide range of uses in the, in this Imperial River District, but also will provide some of the parking needs of the rest of the downtown, which has a fine grain of urban fabric, small blocks, and over there, it will be more difficult to provide large parking lots or parking onsite, so some of this needed parking, we can be accommodated in these one or two garages. Then we have, these are pages, basically, from the urban regulations, urban standards of the code itself, describing not only in writing the metrics, the kind of the technical parameters of how the form will work, but also illustrates. These are still in draft, like for example, in the T-five core, we haven't shown galleries or, you know, deeper awnings, you know, basically for protection from, from the suns, for shading purposes, so this is something which we'll be adding, but it gives an idea about the variety of building types allowed, the variety in height, four stories is the maximum in both T-five zones. Then we go, these are the, the T-four zone, where you can see some attached housing, we're not showing here the single family, but a single family is still allowed in T-four on smaller lots, whether they're side yards or other type of cottage arrangements. We had in our preliminary, actually, implement, preliminary introduction to the Form-Based Code, the proposal for cottage courts, and they were very well accepted by, at least by the community in our workshops, we, we have not demonstrated here, but we can easily include, and then the two T-three zones, the open and the restricted one, which I mentioned. These are some of the different, actually here, you can see this arrangement, this is, this is the frontage types, which are in combination with some of the prior, the prior standards, which I showed you. For example, on a corner, you can have a small, a small plaza, or a four court of this type, or a cottage court in T-four. We also took a lot of attention, we put a lot of attention into signage along the storefronts, all types of, of signage in awnings, whether it's a marquee, whether it's freestanding on the sidewalk, all of these are regulated very specifically with specific dimensions and how they, so it, there is a consistent branding and consistent signage in the downtown, and I believe that this is a kind of the overview of very fast and short overview of the document, you will have the opportunity to look in much more detail. If you have any questions, please.
Council?
I do.
Fred?
One thing I noticed as I glanced through the, this first draft of the report, all the facades tend to be smooth or flat, and I know that we were, all the, most all the land development codes that we have talk about ins and outs and this and that, so are we getting away from that, or is this more to come?
That's, that's a very good question, and I was thinking about it, that we discussed in our preliminary study, we discussed a transition line at the level of the ground floor and possibly at the third floor, so the fourth floor has a setback. Actually, in the drawings which I showed for, which I showed for Bamboo property, if you, if you notice here, we did that, you can see that you read here three stories, but there is a, and I think that it may be in the, oh, sorry, in the, that's, that we actually show the more, the more diverse here, you can see that we have a transition line at the ground floor, where the storefronts are, and one at the, at the third floor, so we illustrated it, but we did not illustrate it in the Form-Based Code. I think that we can do that.
I think, but in this report, almost all of its illustrations are straight up and down, even the four-story.
Yes, yes, so the-
I'm figuring-
Noted, yes.
That'll, that'll work out.
We will include that, this is, this is noted. Just one comment on the, on the height, the height will be regulated basically by number of stories, there will be a height limit also with your number, which you currently have as fifty-five at top of Cornice or at top of Eve, which also will give some, some variety, you know, when you have a combination of pitched and flat roofs.
Council, anything else?
Just a, first of all, great job, and I like the way you opened up the, pardon expression, the Bamboo property, consistent with really the view of a lot of people have expressed on council over time. Just a question about the parking garage, which is, and it's actually more for Matt even, you know, we have that property over on Phelps with the bio thing, and, you know, could that be a place in lieu of here?
You ready for me to?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the thing that we built on Phelps really is a pilot project.
Right.
And it, the way it's constructed, you, you would be able to construct a parking garage with minimal impact to what is there.
Right.
And probably still be able to operate it honestly, depending on what you do with your design.
You mean on the ground floor to be a previous, like a-
Well, he's already got something.
Something subterranean.
Okay.
And, and so the, the question is, could you build a garage on-
Oh, yes, and, yes, underneath, yeah, absolutely.
Above it, yeah.
Or above.
All right, thank you.
Council?
Did you say you had something on the, going out to RFQ, on the Bamboo and the-
That's, so this is an update of the process of what we'd be looking at as a separate T, T-section for Bam-, the Imperial-
Special district.
Special district.
Special district.
And that, that's the direction, the, these are potential examples of what would be part of the RFP.
I didn't clarify that these are illustrative, you know, they illustrate, but they stay within the, within the Form-Based Code in terms of scale and architecture, language and form. For the RFP, we have been thinking, discussing that you can go, maybe show these in the RFP if you want, or you can go with a much more general regulating plan, where you show where you want to have public access to the river and where the buildings are, but what happens within the envelope, you can leave greater freedom for the public sector to come and show what they can or want to do, and then we can basically revisit, I mean, or you can look at it and compare with some of the, these preliminary studies, or you can share with them, and we discussed that maybe even in the RFP, you have a preliminary pre-submitting meeting with the, with the developers to discuss all of this, basically to describe to them your, your vision for the area.
So, how soon can we put out an RFP?
Pardon?
How soon can we put out an RFP?
So, we're looking to bring the final Form-Based Code to you in September, and we are simultaneously working through the vision for the Bamboo, so upon the, that would happen during the adoption, we'll be looking for the adoption. The other question we would be posing to you, and not at this meeting, is, these changes- The other question we would be posing to you, and not at this meeting, is these changes do require a comprehensive plan amendment, that, because the original overlay is in your comprehensive plan. So we would like to ask counsel, not, not for a decision this evening, whether you'd like us to approach Dr. Banian as working simultaneously through that as well.
To coordinate the two. It makes a lot of sense that this Form-Based Code is coordinated with a comprehensive amendments or update.
Okay. Well, I, I know with other things, we allow like a zoning in progress for people to come forward to build things. So I, I don't see why we can't go forward with the RFP sooner, you know, because everybody can see what we're working on. It's pretty close. It's, you know, like you said, it's a first draft, but it kind of gives the idea of what we're looking for. So I, I don't see what would hurt with getting things rolling to, to get that done sooner. Right now, we still have a pretty decent market going for building. You know, I'd hate to see us, you know, miss, miss the boat, basically, waiting too long.
I think that you have a flexibility as leadership of the community to decide on that. We can leave it to you. It, it will work both ways. If you have, if you show this draft and you say, this is the commitment of the city, that we want, you know, a vision of this more or less scale and type of development, and you describe in your, in like regulating, like regulating plans for the bamboo property, more or less what you want to do, it is not impossible.
Yeah. So is that something we could work on, trying to get this done sooner for the bamboo and the Levin?
I would just add to that, Mike, not to cut while you're thinking about that maybe for a second. You know, I don't know that we need to single out properties, per se. We had talked about this in our meeting. Arlene, do you want to share? I, I don't know, not your thoughts, per se, but how many properties? I mean, if we open up an RFP, why do we just pick out a lot or two? I mean, why, I think we should open up for whatever the city owns.
So, so the mayor was asking in our individual meeting about thoughts about the additional properties that we own as well. We have been working on specifically honing in on the bamboo, because that is a signature piece, and how that would relate to the other pieces, how they would fall in. I believe that there is a transect design for each of the other properties. We probably need some more feedback from counsel on those individual properties. For example, we talked about the, the lemon tree lot and, and the, the uses that are happening there right now, and then as well as the Levin lot. The lemon tree lot, we have a discussion about folks that are utilizing that. But I think the plans of what they're moving forward with, we would want some consensus from counsel, that that's the direction we're going. We're looking at those individual parcels and how they fall into the T-SEC plan. We can look at that as well. It's, it's a decision on how you want to address the bamboo, if you want that to be your signature piece first. That's, that was the conversation we had.
Fred?
I was going to make a suggestion. When we do it, I think you, what would be ideal is you get the bamboo thing in first, but as soon as it's unveiled, the public would see it, it'll be kind of a public opening, I assume, then you immediately go out with the RFP on these other properties, because the guys that will be interested knows, would like to know what's going to happen on the bamboo. And so if they see a lot of good, or two or three really good proposals along the line that DPZ has suggested, it will make those other properties more valuable and of more interest. So I think maybe 30-day stagger or something between one and the other would be a good thing, and probably help us get a better, a better deal for us on those property. But I think, I think doing something sooner is not a bad idea, as long as we don't crowd it too much and mess it up.
Additionally, Mayor, I think we would like to have some direct from, direction from counsel on the other city-owned properties. Initially, what was discussed was bamboo and Levin, so we'd probably need to bring forward the other discussion you had today about the other city-owned properties.
Right. And I've mentioned that before, but, so it's not the first time we've heard it. Yes?
Well, I, I think that we have a lot of work to do here. So I, I, I think, I don't think we should drag our feet, but I don't think we should rush into things. We have to make, still make some decisions. This has not even been reviewed. So, and you said that you needed like 90 days to get to the next kind of?
Well, it will also depend on your feedback, and when we receive it from staff and from the city.
The staff needs feedback, we need feedback, so we have to look at that. So I, I do think that we should get our ducks in a row, so to speak, so we, we're not just pipe-draining all these things, and that we have a conviction of our, among ourselves of the direction we should go. I personally think we should go to the bamboo first, because that's, is our signature piece. We can spend a lot of time deciding if we want to go in this route or a, an alternate route, and then we could do the RFP. And we, I mean, we can't be drilling construction all over the downtown area anyway, it's just would be so disruptive. So it's better to do it cut sequentially. But if we could generate ideas from developers in the other properties, that would be great. But we have to do our work first. So I don't know how fast we need to expedite this.
Well, the sooner you expedite it, the sooner we'll be able to finish it.
Right. So it's really the staff and the council that needs to have, we probably should schedule a workshop or something like that, in the middle of our budget process. So this is why I think that, you know, we, we have to be realistic about how quickly we can do this. And maybe Arlene could give us some guidance about a schedule and how practically we can do this. But I, I wouldn't want to get ahead of us, look at, get this carefully. I think that's, would be the wrong direction to take.
Yeah. No, and Amy, I hear your points. Believe me, I don't disagree with one thing you said, but we've been sitting on this land for years. The market's hot. We got a lot of momentum going on down there. That's not rushing into anything. And I don't, you know, I guess maybe, in a sense, and it's not for you, Amy, I would take offense to anybody that thinks we're rushing into anything here. It's been years and years and years in the making. So with that in mind, quite frankly, what do you, what do you need from us tonight to move forward?
Well, we, uh...
So I believe we need, so this, this is the initial draft. We need an opportunity as staff as well to review the draft. We also want to provide a copy of the draft to Dr. Banian, to make sure we're, how we're being consistent with the comprehensive plan. We'd like feedback from the council. There are some decision-making points in the draft that you have. For example, is the council interested in the expansion of the boundaries? There's some questions regarding each T-zone and where you'd like to lie the density. For example, do you want to keep the density the same and offer bonus density as it is allotted in the comprehensive plan? Or do you want to look at providing a straight density and not providing the bonus anymore, but higher, at a little bit higher level? Which is also consistent, for example, 20 units, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So these are discussions that we need some feedback from you all. Also, with the draft plan for bamboo, I believe you placed 20 units.
Yes.
An acre direct. So we'd like some feedback from that, how you feel about the number of units, the square footage of the units, the concept of the parking lot. So I, I think we wanted a chance for you all to absorb this this evening. We, we need some feedback from, from you all as well. And then we also need at staff level to ensure consistency with a comprehensive plan.
Absolutely. No, that sounds great. And also in our meeting, we had talked about separating kind of the wheat from the chaff, if you will, with some of these people that might be interested in bidding on an RFP. We can, we can do a lot of different things. We can say, it's going to cost you $500 or $1,000 to get into the room, or whatever the number is, some number, to have a discussion. We, we, we have to see proof of your financing, your funding. So there, I mean, look, we can do this a number of different ways. It's up to us. We've got some great momentum down there. We've got the library, we've got a lot of different businesses that are happening, and I'm looking forward to this. So whatever we need to do, however we need to do it, let's do it.
And before your feedback, we also have a lot of, you know, things which we will be doing in the meantime, you know, like the transition lines and all these things which we, we heard from since yesterday and all the meetings today. So we will be busy while you are gathering your comments and sending them back to us. We will be in touch in the next month or so with, with, with staff on moving things forward.
Can I make one suggestion along the lines of the various parcels? I think it might be helpful, so we're effectively the developer. We own the property, we're the developer. And I don't think any of us here are developers, but we're in that position, because we own the property. I think it might make some sense for Arlene to reach out to whatever, and I don't mean to make a big deal of this, but there, there are consultants out there that work with governments in terms of these issues like timing. So for example, does it make more sense to have a declared success at bamboo and capitalize that sequentially? Or does it make more sense to do it in one big bang? I'm just suggesting. I don't know the answer to that, and I don't think any of us, I think that's a respectable position. And the other is too, you know? So how would a developer go on about doing this? So I don't mean to, I clearly don't mean to start a whole new process of, you know, we're going to go higher, take times, you know? But if there's a way, Arlene, that would make sense to you. I know, for example, Astero has done some of that. I don't know if the guys are any good, but they used. I know other cities have done it. I know way back before there was the Village of Astero, the ECCL had a consultant where they were looking at the three parcels. One of them ended up as a hospital parcel, another one ended up at North Point that the Collier family owned, ended up actually just partially hospitals, partially in the downtown. But they had a consultant with respect to that. I'm just talking about conversations, I'm not talking about a full engagement. But just to bounce these ideas that have been talked about up here off of.
Okay. Thanks, Peter.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, anything? Fred?
Well, I think that when we do these proposals, we ought to have options, because like, there's two ways you can go. You can sell it, or you can do a long-term lease.
That's another.
And I think, I think you want them to be able to give you both kind of proposals. And then we get people that are good at analyzing and looking at it, and see what, which one is, which is going to give us the best development.
Yes.
Which is what we're, but also how we're going, how we're going to do on the money. And I think that, I think we ought to have a, a list of questions we need to put to bed, like what was outlined about, do we have a, just a firm density, or do we have a, a density with some bonus options? And I, I think you want to do that, because that's the way you get public art and places and stuff like that, by giving some reward for that. If they don't have a reward, they'll tend to go in a different direction. But that's just my opinion.
Well, I might say I agree with that, and I think that's in, this issue of how you structure, that's above a lot of pay grade, too. And with respect, I think it's above management's pay grade here. And a consultant could help with respect to that. Do we do a lease, so we have a take-it-back? Do we just sell it? Do we sell it with conditions? All that stuff is what Fred just said. I think we could use a little professional advice.
And has DPZ done things like that?
No, we don't do this directly. We, we have worked with consultants in the past, or our clients, actually, so we can look at.
Be able to give Arlene some lead.
We may, yeah, we, we will give you, whoever we have worked in the past with, definitely.
And, so September was mentioned, is that the next step is September, or we're going to be done with this in September?
The Form-Based Code was planned to be given to you in a final form, it's in September for your adoption. That would be the question that we wanted to ask about, because that's through the land development code. You have, you have the component of the comprehensive plan. So at the next meeting, we were going to be asking whether you wanted us to engage FGCU in simultaneously preparing any comp plan requirements.
Yeah, I, I'd say whatever we can do to make this go faster, the better.
And Dr. Banian, are you working on our?
She's working, so we previously came forward, and we decided to move forward just with the state mandated. We left all optionals. Now, understanding that if we move the process for this component only faster, we would be doing our public workshop series out of season, which we have typically tried to do all those in season, but understanding the, the need to keep these processes moving, we just wanted to make sure the council was comfortable with that. We can have a conversation with Dr. Banian and, and bring forward in the next meeting a proposal, so we can keep that going.
I guess one last point I had is, sounds like the by-play between you and Peter here, I agree with him on, we're talking about standards and such. We clearly want, so to speak, real developers who can really get something done. I think that's what I hear you saying. You know, not speculators, people who will really make a major statement, whether that's Florida-wide people or national people. And frankly, my view is with DPZ at our side, I'm hoping that will help attract such people.
Arlene, may I suggest that you provide the council a list of all these things that we're supposed to be reviewing? And that, you know, we do our homework, and we could expedite it that way.
And like I'd said in the meeting, you know, and maybe the six others up here know exactly, but when I see we're proposing 25 feet here, or 27 feet there, I, you know, I don't know about that. But I look forward to the questions and going through them. Greg?
I just had a quick question. Well, Mike and Fred both brought up about the consultants. Are we going to have to go out to RFP for a consultant now, too, for this? And if so, can we expedite that, like in the next meeting, agree to put that out for a proposal? There's got to be a quick way to do that. Is there?
Let, my, I will work with Derek and we'll see what options we have, and then maybe there's even an option of someone who, in another government that already has a contract in place, so.
Yeah, I'm just talking about money-wise, how much money, you know, figure it out.
Cut through it, Rooney. Cut through it.
Make it happen.
Wouldn't we be able to expedite getting one if we decide that's what we want to do it, by letting DPZ be the prime?
Actually, we had the Fishkind Associates with us. They did basically the, the Bonita Beach Road Land Study Economic Impact Study. So, I mean, they can be maybe tapped for.
Fred, could I suggest that we have management figure that out with them?
Yeah. Figure out what we can and can't do.
It, it, it really depends on the name. If you need to tag on the contract, so you expedite, that's why, that's why I was thinking.
All I did was ask a question, could we save time that way?
Yep.
And I think you can.
That's for Derek to answer. Well, I'd rather leave it to management and consultant with DPZ, I guess is my point.
And Derek, you can get back to us prior to the next.
Yeah. I mean, the, the issue is just going to depend on what consultants you, you need. You know, if it's something that has a statutory process, like an engineer, for some reason you decide you want an engineer to do a value adjustment idea on the plans or something like that, that would have to go out to RFP.
I'm talking about a, I'm talking about a.
If it's something, just a financial consultant.
I'm talking about a development maven.
Yeah. That's a different story.
And you've already got somebody in the back of your head, so, you know?
I, I just did a project in Miami for the county, and they had a land lease on a project that they wanted developed, and they, they did it out that way. So.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Thinking they might have someone.
Right. But what I'm saying is, if you can let us know, whenever you find out, you don't have to wait till the next meeting.
Right.
Thank you, Derek. Counsel? Uh, Greg, you had a question.
No, that was it.
Okay.
I was done.
Counsel, anything else? Closing thoughts?
Great job.
Yeah. Great job. Thank you very much, and safe travels back to Miami. Enjoy your NBA game on the radio and whatever else you guys are going to do, but be safe. I've driven that road at night, it's not a lot of fun.
I just came back from there.
Yeah. Take care. Thank you very much for everything. Okay, we are going to move right along, and we are now up to mayor and council member items. Oh, yeah, this is great. This is something that I worked on with Mayor Kevin Ruane from Sanibel, who is our de facto leader in so many ways in Lee County in terms of all things environment. And we worked on a resolution. As you can see, the funding continues to come in for the Florida Everglades and blue-green algae, I mean, literally to historic amounts. But that, and there's nothing, there, there shouldn't be a but. I need a different word than but. However, there are things that go on year after year after year after year after year, and rather than make this a year after year after year cliffhanger, what we're calling for, the bottom line, be it further resolved that the United States Conference of Mayors, including the mayors of Southwest Florida, cities of Bonita Springs, Cape Coral, Astero, Fort Myers, Fort Myers Beach, and Sanibel, support funding, the restoration of SERP and the American Everglades in the amount of $200 million in annual funding for the United States Congress to address concerns related to pollution, wildlife impacts to the environment, and humans, water movement, storage, and water reuse. Because if you look at it there, SERP is a 16 to $20 billion funding, and it, which kind of breaks down into $200 million a year. We're not exactly on track. We'd like to get back on track and stay on track. Going to work with, obviously, our fellow mayors from Florida, but we're going to be reaching out to 49 other states. Been in contact with the United States Conference of Mayors. It's been submitted, it's been accepted. We're waiting for our staff contact person at the. person at this point, and which committee, actually, they're gonna assign this to. So, once that happens, we will be reaching out to all committee members and working on this diligently to make sure this passes and get some traction. So, I, what this was, and I'm bringing this to you, obviously, A, you know my style. I want you to know about it anyway. But there was a deadline, and I forget, it was last week, in other words. So, I couldn't, I had to do it. We did it as mayors, individual mayors. We didn't do it as an entire council because we didn't have time to vote on it, so.
So, this is, in essence, what Congressman Rooney is pushing?
Yes.
In fact, this is exactly what he's pushing.
That's exactly, that's exactly-
Right. So, the bipartisan letter, all the 27 congresspeople from Florida that went to the president, and then maybe to the House, this is consistent with that? Well, move to approve?
Yes, okay.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Plan?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
And you'll take comfort in the fact that I had a lot of help writing this. So, there's actually people that knew what they were talking about writing this. So, in terms of the numbers and the technical issues, so, thank you very much, counsel, for that. We now have item B, adopt a resolution approving a budget transfer from the contingency account to fund a study to identify traffic calming solutions on Pennsylvania Avenue. Councilman Gibson, and for folks, this is green sheet 1906-158. Mike?
Yeah, so, we've had some issues along Pennsylvania corridor, especially of late speeding accidents. Most recent was a motorcycle that hit a school bus. Luckily, none of the kids were hurt. But there's a lot of, uh, school bus stops along that road. A lot of people walk along that road, ride bikes. It's, it's a residential road, but people consistently speed. And so, we're, we're just looking for ways that we can slow down the speeding through traffic calming things that can be done on the road. You know, we're not experts at it, so we're asking for somebody to take a look at it and see what can be done. And so, but I had asked Arlene what, what we could do to expedite this, to get it done this budget cycle, instead of waiting for next budget to start it. So, she said there is some money in contingency funds. So, I'm just asking that we move that money over and get this ball rolling.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. And I would just add, we've got the money, and that's great. Is that enough? Is it too? What will that do? What will that $45,000 do, Matt, over on Pennsylvania?
What, what that should do is get some, some evaluation of the roadway, and then really some, some tangible traffic calming. The traffic calming is physical things that are gonna slow folks down on the road. So, I know some people mentioned a speed reduction study. We're not, it's speed reduction through physical altercation.
Altercation is good.
Alteration of the roadway. Speed tables come to mind, which are, are a, a physical measure that makes you actually drive slower on the roadway. Chicanes might be a possibility, which are, kind of turns through there. Thanks, Derek. Those are, are, might be a little more challenging, but they're forced, forced curves in the roadway that, that then force vehicles to slow down. Those are the types of ideas that we would be talking about. And ultimately, what we would get is some evaluation of what best fits the roadway that we could then implement. And, and, you know, some design work so that we can go out and actually physically implement these things.
And then, once the design work is secured, its plan is brought forward to council, then we can look at preparing for budgeting whatever needed improvements there are. And that would be through a CIP.
Assuming there's 47,000, what is it?
Forty-five.
Forty-four. Came as a result of conversations with Arlene or something. I mean, I, it should be more. It should be more. And you'll come back to us, right?
This was a start, and it was based, based on-
It's based, I've had some preliminary conversations with some traffic engineering firms. I think this will get what I described, which will get you something you can implement that makes sense for the corridor that will slow folks down.
All right.
Okay, great. Thank you for that explanation. There's been a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Greg?
Just a couple of questions. Can we put some more money towards it and just do signage until then? Cause with the study, and then, is there something we can do now?
Can we set a cop, even if it's an empty cop car out there? You know how they do that, and people, oh, and they slow down.
I'm just trying to think of something, I mean, we had, we had people here tonight to talk about it. We've had two accidents here soon in the recent past.
We've had those discussions with the sheriff's department, and we'll continue to, with the signage trailer that, you know, flashes if you're speeding and, and logs the data. Really, this is the next step.
I know it's the next step, but there's something that we can do.
We'll continue to have them in between, you know, with, with increased patrols and increased frequency with that signage trailer, but.
You're looking for additional signage beyond the sheriff's department vehicles there.
Exactly. Something, you know, until this gets done, and we have some concrete ideas, whether it's a chicane, or whether it's a roundabout, or whether it's, you know, a line of-
We can look at-
A stump, or whatever it is.
Yeah. We can look at some additional signage, see what we can, can bring to, to bear. But ultimately, the, the physical stuff's what's gonna slow folks down.
I imagine the sheriff's office been out there, but why couldn't the sheriff's office be out there in a way that the word absolutely spreads that, boy, you start going over the limit there, they're gonna grab you immediately? Cause I don't think that is what people think. So, and, I mean, whatever you can do about enhanced policing of that strictly, I think, for sort of reputation is, like I said, my gosh, you, you go fast there, you're gonna get nabbed.
And, and they have stepped up along that road, and they're not doing warnings. It's straight-up tickets, so.
All right, well, maybe even more.
And Matt, if you want, or maybe I would, if council's fine with this, and, you know, maybe you and I could have a conversation with the sheriff or Captain Lee, just, just, just so we can, look, you and I don't know all the things there are to know, right?
Sure.
Let's face it. So, if you would do that with me, and, or at least, we can have a conversation, or Arlene, with the sheriff and the sheriff's office, to see other things, additional things, immediate things that can be done. And maybe there isn't anything, but I find that hard to believe. That'd be great. So, I'll put that, I guess, on you and, or, 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 Arlene, if you could help coordinate Matt and I with that, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Is there further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Plan?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Okay. That is unfortunate, but, uh, thank you very much, Mike, for that. We're now gonna move on to item nine, a first reading of the following ordinance. Derek?
An ordinance repealing and replacing Bonita Springs code, sections 4-2124 through 4-2132, temporary uses, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, and scrivener's errors, modifications that may arise from the consideration of public hearing and effective date. As you all recall, this is the temporary use ordinance we've been discussing since around January. This originally came out of discussions, I think, about firework tent sales. As you recall, we are not able to regulate firework tent sales, but upon review of our temporary use code, and I know we've had a lot of conversation about issues with the special events permits and things like that. John and I looked at how we could revise it. This is basically repealing your old temporary use code, addressing the same issues, but in this particular code, we're dealing with two major changes. The first is, now we are actually dealing with the intensity of the use. So, we've broken it down into two types, type one and type two. They're basically divided by how large they are. So, a type one would be your small tent sale for a Christmas tree, something like that, maybe at a, at a Home Depot. Your type two are gonna be your bigger operations, more like a festival of some kind. We wanna make sure that, that parking is addressed, that safety concerns are addressed. And one of the major things that we've changed now is, even though it was sort of touched on in the prior code, the new code looks at, says, if you are going into an existing, and I'm gonna use an example I used earlier today, if someone wants to hold a book fair at the Perkins down the street, and they decide that they're gonna take up half the required parking for Perkins, and Perkins doesn't have any extra parking, then the question we have to ask ourselves is, where are the, the patrons of Perkins going to go? Because they have required parking, and if, if, they're gonna, they spell on the street. So, unless the Perkins is closing, you're taking up required parking. So, what this does is, this allows us to identify areas and fit those temporary uses in places where there is adequate infrastructure. Otherwise, there's adequate parking, both for the existing use and for the, the traffic drawn by the use that's coming in. Additionally, we looked at the situation of where if these uses are, if you have a piece of property that's being repeatedly used for these temporary uses, is that an issue of, you know, holding off development? Effectively, if I have a, if I have a piece of property adjacent to my developed piece of property, and every, every month I have some other vendor out there selling cars, selling boats, selling, you know, tomatoes, whatever it is, you know, shouldn't we, that, that development be required to come in, make sure that it has adequate infrastructure, traffic, parking, all those issues, rather than staying prematurely vacant and basically subsidizing that use? Those uses are effectively permanent if they're occurring at such regularity. So, what we've done is we've put proposed limits on the type one uses, would be of one particular property. And type one is defined by 1,500 square feet, basically. What is the coverage of the use? And if that use is there, they can have six times on that parcel per year. Otherwise, they'll have to find another parcel. And the larger use is the type two, it's three times per year. And that's what we proposed. So, still have to go to LPA, and then it'll go for final adoption, probably sometime around July.
I'm a little confused. Everything you're saying makes sense, but I didn't, I thought we started out with fireworks. So, how do we end it with this?
We, we did start out with fireworks. And with the, the issue came of what are some of the, the effects of fireworks, not just the issues of fireworks, but the issues of where they're locating, how they're affecting, you know, the developed parcels that there are. And so, in discussions with community development, we thought, maybe we should look at this issue holistically, and not be targeting one particular user, but all the types of users that, that have those same impacts.
Cause I guess the way Derek explained it to me was, we just couldn't say no more fireworks in those tents. All the tents would have to go away.
The, the problem with our-
Christmas sale, the public-
Christmas tree sales.
The Christmas trees, the pub-
Oh, okay. You're happy with this?
Yeah. This is the best workaround that we can do.
Yeah. Yeah, the issue that we, we had in our old code is we had too many carve-outs for different uses. It should be uniform.
And there are other reasons why you might want to have this notion of a temporary use that don't have anything to do with sales, where people are doing certain things in properties where they impact their neighbors because they do it over a long period of time. And so, I think that's applicable to that. It's beyond the fireworks. So, I was very pleased to see this wording in here myself.
Well, my, my view is, I don't know if we're solving a problem that doesn't exist, but if it has to be done with respect to the fireworks, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's respect to fireworks. I think what we're doing is, when we looked at the fireworks issue, and then looked at our, how our codes treat the fireworks, we have a whole separate fireworks code that's remaining unchanged. We saw that the existing temporary use code really could be tightened up. So, this, the way I look at this, this is really regulating parking and temporary uses and cleaning that up, making it tighter where it should have been, and addressing one of the open questions, which was, yeah, we allow the use, but we never looked at the intensity of that use. So, if you had a, if you had a piece of property that was adjacent to a single family, and every weekend they're having a music festival, other than through our special event permits where we restrict the noise and specifics about that, but we've never looked at, should that parcel be looked at for how, how often it's being used and, and how intense that use is repeatedly? So, that's, that's what gets addressed here.
Mike?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. First, when, can you put page numbers on this, so when we discuss it later, it's easier? Because the way it's broken down into sections, it's nearly impossible to tell you, you know, you gotta go back two, three pages to say it's section two, and then B, and then, you know, it's just broken up.
I'll do page numbers and lines.
And then, so for the type two permit, it says you can have three a year, but no more than two concurrently. So, that's, and it's 10 days apiece, that's only 20 days. I don't, I don't know how long the Christmas tree place is usually open, but, I mean, would that still accommodate them?
Generally, the, the Christmas tree would fall under the type one tent sale.
It'd be, it'd be less-
Yeah. And, and perfectly, it's a perfect example of, like, the Home Depots. Those Home Depots, and they're, when they have those Christmas tree sales, they're overparked. They have extra parking. So, it's really isn't gonna, this is, this is the perfect example to fit those, those examples. And, and I actually pulled this code from, this is a code I wrote about 10 years ago for Charlotte County, and I called them to see-
We're not paying you for this one, then, cause-
Yeah. No, no, I didn't, and, and, and I didn't, I didn't convert it. John did.
Didn't have any numbers, Mike.
Yeah, yeah. So, but the point is, I, you know, I followed up to see how that's been working in effect, and there hasn't been any issues with it.
Okay, yeah, cause I was-
Those numbers work.
Trying to envision what a 30 by 50 tent would look like, and if it was smaller or bigger than that, cause the smaller ones can go up to 60 days or something like that. But, okay, yet, the only other thing I kinda noticed was, it's the second to last page. Right in the middle of the page, it says maximum duration of temporary use is nine months or 27 days after the date the president declares a disaster. Is that nine months and 27 days, or?
Yeah, I'll have to look at that. Was one, that's a piece of language we carried over from an existing code. I'll take a look at that one. Yeah, cause it doesn't make sense, the nine months or 27 days.
Yeah, cause further down, it says if there is no disaster declared, then it's 60 days or something.
Okay. Thank you for that catch.
And I guess motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion? I'm still looking for what you're pointing out, Mike. Yeah, go ahead, Peter, but that's okay.
It's in section two, on the second to last page.
Only that, I respect the point about the fireworks. The more I'm having the conversation, the more I'm thinking we're just imposing a lot more regulation. But rather than prolong it, I'm just have a chat with Derek between meetings. I'm sure there's a good reason for this. But, you know, I don't know if we need more reg, I, I just don't know the problem we're solving. But let's just, I'll have a chat with him, and if I have an issue, I'll come back.
Okay. There's been a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Plan?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Derek, anything else at this time?
No, that was just approval for the publication. So, we'll, we'll move forward. It'll go to LPA, and you'll see it again, in either at the end, next, your next meeting, or July. The next item on the, oh-
I was gonna say, I'm split here. I've got a public comment section here for members of the public that would like to speak. Please come forward. Good evening. How you doing?
Hello, mayor, council, and city staff. My name is Jim Magnus. And we went to the DPZ. We've been to a couple of their different events. And we went to the one last night, and I just had some thoughts, and I wanted to present those to the council today. We've been a resident, I've been a resident since 1990. We've improved a number of properties and purchased several others as investments in Bonita. The city has spent big money to improve the downtown corridor, and you're to be commended, it's a beautiful job. It's, downtown looks beautiful. Now is the time to put the city properties back on the tax rolls. It's fiscally responsible to make them producing properties for the city. No one knows what the future economic conditions will be. We have a presidential election coming up, a stock market at all-time highs that, that has increased for an unprecedented number of years. I believe that you have a limited window to get the properties the city owns back on the tax rolls while the economy is still doing well. My understanding is that DPZ hopes to have the form-based code completed by the end of September. No disrespect to the plans provided by DPZ, but when questioned as to the viability of any of their plans, the response was, we're not tasked with whether the designs we made are economically feasible or not. We talked a little bit about the, the parking and approximately $15,000 per actual parking space if you do a ramp. The only way the city council will know what is feasible and true interest in improving these lots is to put out an RFP. The beauty of the RFP is that it does not obligate the city to sell anything, but allows the city to, to approximately examine the full financial opportunities and what the economic potential for these properties look like. I suggest you continue your form-based code discussion, and at the same time, put out an RFP for all the downtown city-owned properties. Getting these prop, these two projects to finish around the same time will also allow you the ability to make changes if you feel that they're needed to make one or another plan work. We're a local family, and, and we would like to see a continuation of the walkable, bikeable, and pedestrian friendly downtown that supports appropriate parking needs, public open park space, and promotes business in the downtown Bonita corridor. The city has spent taxpayers' dollars improving the old 41 corridor, now let private dollars go to work. I say put all the city properties up for RFP, jumpstart the development on 41 to complement the city's recent investment. Let's not miss the window that is currently favorable. I do appreciate your time and consideration.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here tonight. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good evening.
My name's Bob DiGiulamo. What I would like to say is, two stop signs slow down the traffic on- What I would like to say is, two stop signs slow down the traffic on Shangri-La. Maybe that's what we should put on Pennsylvania.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath. I know earlier I said, you know, thank you to our community policing and all, but I think you all know, I support not only the community policing, but I'm sure of Carmine and seeing all the way down, they're great, but it's not only them, it's all our first responders, including the fire department and paramedics and everything. And I also am a huge supporter of Benita Springs Utilities, and I would just like to make you all aware of several awards that were won recently, that you may not know about, and that the public should know, too. Because I think we're fortunate to have such a wonderful utility, and I've been, it's part of my family. Bob and I were charter members that signed up in 1970 to get it going, so. But anyway, the first award, it is from the Florida Water Environment Association. It's the Leroy H. Scott Award, and Jake Hepakowski won it. And it's given to consider the work of wastewater treatment plant operators who are members of it, and who nominate the operators who made the greatest contribution to his or her operators, who did the best job in operating a plant regardless of its size or available equipment. So that was one. And the second one, Earl B. Phelps won first place. The Florida Water Environment Association gives the Earl B. Phelps Award annually to recognize wastewater treatment facilities which have maintained the highest removal of major pollution cause constituents prior to discharging, treated affluent to the receiving water, so it's all a plus. Thanks for letting me talk about it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kathy.
I like to give credit where it's due.
Absolutely. Oh, my goodness, look who it is. John, welcome.
Thank you, mayor, council. Some years ago, I'm sorry, I'm not living here anymore, but 32 years means a lot, you know, and I like to follow what's going on. So I hope you don't mind my making a few comments. The, I've looked at the plan for the Bamboo site, and you may not know, but some years ago, I offered to go to Hong Kong after Mr. Anteramian gave up his option to purchase that lot. And I went there with the knowledge of the then-city mayor, a city manager. And I spent 10 days there. I had a good time, but I didn't, they were, the property was too small for them over there at that time. So I was actually quite excited when Anteramian took up this option at first, because he was a man who was capable of putting in there something exciting, something that benefited and was befitting for Benita. And therefore, when I saw this plan that DPZ had come up with, frankly, I find it dull. I find it not, you know, it's, they need to do something with it. Everything is square, too near the road, too near the river, and I'm not an engineer, but I can see what looks nice. This does not look nice, and I hope you will be careful about the final decision on that. As Amy says, this is a signature property for Benita. It should be a standout thing. This is not. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I didn't draw it either, John, but thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Jason, welcome.
Thank you very much, mayor. Jason Mond, City of Sanibel, city council, and a Sanibel resident, as well as a candidate for District 76, state representative. I wanted to thank you personally for the mayor and the council for not lynching him for his unilateral actions, and for supporting Congress and Rooney's position on the restoration, as well as the city's positions on the restoration. One of those things that I've thought of the most importance is to keep everybody together, because alone we're weak, and quite frankly, all the cities, together in the community, are legion in our impact, both at the state level and in Congress, quite frankly. And also, I'd like to congratulate the current state representative, Representative Rodriguez, he's having his announcement party tonight at 5:30. Frankly, I thought I would do better being here, listening to what was concerning you than glad-handing my friends and supporters, who I know very well. But one of the reasons that it's always great to support people, or at least to congratulate them when they're running for office, is that it's one of those important things. It's one of the things that democracy hands us, and I myself, when I was running for the Senate 2016, simply because I didn't think the water issue was being taken seriously. And as a hardcore conservative and conservationist, the damage it was going to do to our economy was immeasurable, and somebody needed to do something about it. Luckily, as it all turned out, it became the issue of the election, and it really came to the forefront, and we've got a lot done, all the way through to the governor currently. But I think today, it's most particular, given that it's June 6th, and that 75 years ago, and tonight, a lot of young men were hiding in the fields of France, fighting for their life, in order to preserve our ability to do exactly what we're doing. It is, of course, D-Day today, and I would ask everybody tonight to remember in their prayers, and those who are lost, the survivors, it seems to a man and a woman, can speak to the fact that they're proud to have survived. And as we all should note, those families that lost generations of sons and daughters that would have come from those who gave their lives to preserve our freedom are the most important in the pantheon of our civil heroes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move along. City attorney's items. Derek?
Hey, I've got a couple of items that were tagged on to me as green sheets, and then one item that I actually have. The first item, and both Jay and Mary are here from community development to talk about, is permission to advertise on the golf course regulations. This is the results of what we've been working on during the moratorium. So it's an early draft. It'll be heard three more times publicly, both at the LPA, and then there'll be a first reading and a second reading, both public hearings by the city council. We're just asking for permission to advertise at this item.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Arlene?
We have to vote.
Oh, we need to vote to advertise? My apologies. Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman McCrumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilman McCar?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Okay, and then my third and final item for you is, as you're all aware, we had a mediation on BG Mine recently. What I am asking for is, I would like to set an executive session, so I have an opportunity to talk with you about settlement issues and expenses going forward. I'm looking tentatively at the year 19th, the next meeting, setting it for a time certain. Right now, it looks like 1 PM works for us and for David Theriault to come down. This would be concerning the litigation in five cases. Case number 17CA-000381, 17-CA-004036, 18-CA-003465, and 18-CA-006017. Those are all local 20th Circuit cases. Those are currently pending. And then we also had an appeal, if you might recall, from the DOA decision, which we won, but there's, that has been appealed to the First District Court of Appeals, and that's case number 1D19-1403. All those cases are styled BG Mine versus City of Benita Springs. All I need is just some direction for you, that we'll go ahead and set that executive session up, and we'll advertise and get it on the books.
So I can't make that, I'm gonna be on a plane after our meeting, but can I just catch up with you?
Sure.
Outside of the session?
I'll have to figure out what I can discuss with you, because it was mediated, so there's some confidentiality issues, but I think we can find a way to get you information, get your input.
Dynamite. Thank you, Derek. Anything else?
Nope, I have nothing else.
Okay, wonderful. Arlene, city manager.
Good evening, mayor, council. Just wanted to remind you of July 16th budget meeting at 9:00 AM. And then we also, on each of our agendas now, we are displaying all upcoming meetings of the city council as a form of transparency for the public, as a reminder.
Absolutely. That's great. Matt, you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Dynamite. Okay, mayor and council member items. Amy?
I just put that in my calendar. Just a couple of things. First of all, I do want to recognize our colleagues in Virginia Beach and the things that they're going through. And I think, not only do I want to lend my support, as we all do, for what they're having to deal with, but to recognize the role that our own sheriff's department and policing unit plays in our city, and certainly for our staff. And I also want to recognize our staff, who I think, hopefully, will never have to be confronted with such a thing, but to just say that we are in support of everyone in the city. The second point I want to make, I did attend a Horizon council meeting, it was devoted pretty much to housing, and it was, I'm not, I don't think there was anything new in regard to issues that were brought up, but there were some things that I think we could explore if we want to go down that route. There was a challenge of sorts that was put out by the City of Fort Myers, that each community would do their, quote, fair share, whatever that is, to identify a project where they can add to the housing stock in Lee County. So I wanted to bring that up to you. And my third point I want to make is that I have set up an appointment with Carol Green and Arlene to talk about somehow improving how we can all participate in activism with our elective officials outside of the city, be that the Lee County, state government, federal government, because I think it's a big responsibility to put all that weight on the mayor and Fred or whoever else. But I, and I do think it's something that needs to be done on an ongoing basis, rather than just when they're in session. So that is the topic of the discussion, of whether she thinks she could recommend, with her experience, how we could organize that in a way. And I will, it's my intent, of course, to bring that back to you, to see if we could get something going, and then we could either agree to do it, and then separate the effort that should be done. And I think we should have, like, a constant input to these people who certainly determine a lot in the direction which we're kind of doing. So I wanted to just give you a heads up about that. And that's it.
Thank you. Greg?
No, I just want to thank staff for all they do, and keeping us looking good.
Yeah.
And last thing is, don't forget about the Fourth of July Parade. It's coming up. Bring the noises, the theme, and hope to have a good time.
Thank you, Greg. Laura?
I'm good.
You're good. Peter?
This issue on the stop sign, I actually think is very important, the fellow left who made the point. I remember sitting here for, it seems like, over a year, and actually with Steve McIntosh, who kept on talking about Shangri-La Road, it's gonna be a speedway, can't we put spot stop signs in? And what he was getting back was, well, no, we have rules and regulations, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm glad the gentleman mentioned it. I mean, that has helped with respect to speeding on Shangri-La Road. And frankly, I mean, not that we're traffic experts here, and I know there are all kinds of rules, but I don't know why we just don't put two or three stop signs as soon as we can on Pennsylvania Avenue. Is that a, is that a disturb gods, mighty plan?
The issue we run into with stop signs is the warrants and the regulations-
I understand that.
-in the engineering community.
That's what Steve-
If council would like to place some stop signs and direct us to do so, we'd be more than happy to.
Well, I'd like to, I mean-
Wisconsin and Pennsylvania.
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, is the answer, for me.
That's kind of what I was referring to before, is there's something we can do in it? Even if you were to put, as we call them, like, even the reflectors down, somebody hits those, it's gonna slow them down, not slow them down, but it's gonna bring some attention to it.
Well, could we have a consensus to do that, and have Matt come back and tell us we're wrong, as opposed to, like, waiting?
Go ahead, Matt.
I would prefer direction.
Okay, no, we'll give-
We've been through-
I may or may not have one hanging in my garage that I can give you.
Well, I'm talking about, you have a stop sign in your garage? Well, I'd make that motion. I don't really want to make, do staffs work, and there's all kinds of arguments, I've always resisted that. So that's why, instead of, I mean, I'm just wondering if you could come back, if we could have a consensus, that you would come back next time and say, we're gonna do it, as opposed to us directing you how to direct traffic?
The challenge that we have is, the engineering community, we can certainly look at it with an engineering community, but the challenge we have is, a lot of times, they have a hard time getting to the stop sign.
Well, people, I don't want to be dramatic, right, but people are dying on the road, and I'm not saying you don't recognize that. And I don't know why it's much different than Shangri-La.
Well, and one of the other things, though, is, some of the experts say that stop signs actually makes people speed more, because now they had to stop, now they're gonna floor it as soon as they get through the stop sign.
Has that happened on Shangri-La? Has that happened on Shangri-La?
Fred, I knew you'd been waiting patiently. Now, I'm sorry, Peter, Fred had a-
I think that we ought to try, if we do put stop signs in on that road experimentally, let's put the flashers on them, so you draw more attention to it. Because that will tend to get your attention more than just a stop, you know?
And I mean, to the point, Peter, to your point on Shangri-La, I don't go down that road often, but when I do, I mean, forget speeding. If you're not at a complete stop, it seems to be a cop on that side road every time I go down there. So speeding and complete stops, I mean, so you know, it's almost, it's built in to you. We have to build in good behavior.
No California-
For our drivers. Right, right. Matt?
Yeah, we can certainly bring back, you know, we can look it up, but I think, I'm just trying to, you want action now, I'm just, if you, if that's the consensus, we can go ahead and do that.
The council can supersede the engineering due-
Oh, wonderful.
That's what I'm trying to-
Woo!
Well, but let's make, can I make a suggestion, that rather than on the spot-
Jay, what do you think of that?
You know, talk about process. Rather than on the spot, do it, can we have a consensus that we do it at the intersections that Greg talked about, and have Matt have the opportunity to think about it, you know, and come back to us at the next meeting?
That makes me more comfortable.
There you go. There you go.
Come back and tell us why you can't do it.
Are we good with that team?
Yeah, why we can't do it, yeah.
Okay.
Can you just, it was Wisconsin and was it Michigan?
Whatever he said. Wisconsin and Pennsylvania is a-
Well, that one, but we need another one further west.
Yeah, I know, and I'm looking at it right now.
Someone in the middle.
Okay.
Well, we'll let Matt decide the second one.
Right.
Trying to remember. Down there, Buck-
There's Buccaneer down there.
Is that, no, you're, right, right, but I mean, I'm trying to-
That's too far. It needs to be like Jolly Roger, or Terra del Sol play, Del Rey.
We'll look at something that creates kind of a Shangri-La Road feel.
Okay.
With Wisconsin being an anchor point.
I didn't know we could override the engineering standards. What else can we do?
Now that we're at it, what else can we override?
Come on, Derek, tell us what else we can do.
Derek, what else is-
Derek's having a heart attack.
I'm trying to open us up. What was this decision made? Well. Dynamite.
Right.
Trying to remember. Down there, Buck?
There's Buck and Eer down there.
Is that, would that, no, you're, right, right, but I mean, I'm trying to think.
That's too far. It needs to be like Jolly Roger or Terrell Soul play, Del Ray.
We'll look at something that, that creates kind of a Shangri-La Road feel.
Okay.
With Wisconsin being an anchor point.
I didn't know we could override the engineering standards. What else can we do?
Tell that we're at it, what else can we override?
Come on, Derek, tell us what else we can do.
Derek, what else is...
Derek's having a heart attack.
I'm trying to open us up. What was this decision made? Well... Dynamite.
All right, thank you.
And thank you, Matt, for that, and everybody. So that, that was Peter. Are you, and you're good?
I'm done.
You're good. Okay. Mike?
I'm good. Just thank you for the support on Pennsylvania.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Fred?
I'm done.
You're done?
What?
Okay, I had to bring up one item. I met today with Larry Kurlander, who you know is our chairman of our zoning board. We have, he's coming up on two years as the chairman, and I guess we have something in our, what are they, Arlene?
Regulate, in the regulation is, is not serving longer than two years, and the mayor was interested in having a consensus from council, whether you'd like him to serve longer, and that would require some adjustment to the code to provide that.
Right, and my understanding, based on my conversation with Larry, is they're, they're doing a lot of good things, as we know. They, he has consensus to continue. I guess, as chairman, I have full faith and confidence in him and the work that he's been doing to extend this. So I did, if there was major objection by council, we can keep it at the two years, but...
I, I think it makes a lot of sense, the continuity of what they're doing.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree. So if council's okay with letting me look into, and Arlene look into extending his term, and I think, quite frankly, it's, it's written as two years right now, I'll just say, can we make it four? Consistent with, I hate to say it, administration to administration around here, right?
Whatever, whatever you think.
Yeah, okay, 'cause he's doing such an amazing job, I'll leave it at that. He's doing a great job.
We have clear direction. We'll bring, we'll bring back the proposed language to the next meeting to implement that.
Sure, sure.
And one, and one more quick thing. On the, on the BG Mine issue, I, I only held that data out as tentative. I will work with Sheriff Flynn to see if we can find a way. I'd like everyone to be there.
Well, let me just say, I didn't want to, but actually, I could be at the airport and call in at one o'clock, so that would work for you, right?
I'll have to confirm that we can make sure that we can get that transcribed and everything's appropriate, but I think it might work, yes.
Yeah, to call in.
So basically, that'll be right after our city council meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, give or take. Boy, you're playing those close, huh?
Yeah.
That's good. That's what I had. As always, team, I do this from time to time. You guys are doing a great job. Everybody's digging in, we're working hard, we're getting great things done. Thank you for everything you've done. I'll keep it short and sweet. Team, staff, thank you. You guys are working your tails off, you're doing a great job. So thank you for everything that everybody's doing. We've got a lot of good momentum downtown and around the city. We've got some big things coming down the plate. There's no two ways about that, but I am positive we'll, we'll be able to get through them. We are now looking at approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second of the minutes. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McRumbe?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay. Fred?
Why, why can't we work it out? We're, in the meeting at the beginning, we break and do the executive session, because I think it'd be better if Councilman O'Flynn could be there, and then he might miss something if it runs over to where he would have to go to the airport, but I think that would be better.
Like do it at ten o'clock, or...
Yeah, we may be able to do, the issue is...
A time certain.
Is that David Theriak is coming off a hearing, and he's traveling down for Tallahassee. So I just want to make sure what time he can make it.
Okay.
And then we'll work around that.
Excellent. Thank you. Public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward at this time. Ben, good evening.
You didn't think I'm gonna get out of here without me saying a couple of words. Ben Hirschensohn, I'm glad about the golf course, you know, the first reading, and then the public comment, but a lot of people are very interested about this, obviously. You all know that. But I'm wondering about the element of process. I know myself, but I think a lot of people don't. For example, I know that moratorium on golf course, you know, conversions or development are still in effect, and that's gonna, that's coming to a close. Then you have this going on, which I have always heard the phrase zoning and process. I'm just kind of curious how the zoning and process coincides with the ending of the moratorium, and what actually happens as to the process from this point on. Just a clarification, no details, just, okay, this is what happens, reading, public comment, et cetera. How does that, does that conflict, or is that in concert with the moratorium and all that stuff? Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ben. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.